... action and they target your family the way they.
Who's family?
My course.
What? Hello? All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting, Tuesday,
June the 11th. Now call this the order. Now we have a place of allegiance.
Is an invocation should he choose by Councilman Mitchell.
Please stand.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Okay, second. Questions, all in favor to sign a by? Poses nay? Motion carries, thank you. There is no presentation this evening.
Now we'll move on to the public hearing. How many are here to speak towards the 2020 budget? Would you raise your hands, please? How many people are here to speak regarding our 2020 budget? Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll turn it over to Budget and Finance Chair Carol Burris to lead this part of the meeting. Thank you, Councilman.
Good evening, thank you for being here. I have the privilege of chairing the Budget and Finance Committee for the city. We have been hearing from all the department heads, we've been having education sessions for the past several weeks, and now we want to hear from you. This is a way for you, the public, to educate us, and so we're not going to be giving a lot of feedback tonight. Let me tell you what's going to be happening. Once we hear this, then next week, we're going to start at our 1:30 meetings, which are public, the press is present, and we hope you'll be there too, discussing the budget and the things we need to approve it, how we want to go forward. With everybody's approval, then we will start moving forward then with the first and second readings. The budget has been online the whole time, and a number of my colleagues have received input from many of you. However, there are so many of you that have not given us any input at all, and that's why we welcome this tonight. So, without any further ado, each person will have three minutes to speak. We will mostly listen and take notes. If you want to see what we do with those notes, please come next week in the council room and see how we're handling that. I'm a big believer in transparency and input from as many people as possible, so again, thank you very much for being here. Please stay on topic of the budget because that's what we really want to hear. So without any further ado, if you all would start getting up here and speaking, please identify yourself, please identify where you live, because we all want to know when we're hearing from people from our districts. And if you would set the clock up there once people begin, Mr. Computer Person, we want to make sure they have the full time. So without any further ado, who wants to go first? That's our Chief Finance Officer. Okay, so really, we need you to move up. We saw a bunch of hands, that's why I'm up here. So, hi, identify yourself, Brett.
Good evening, I'm Brad Raison, I'm president of SEIU Local 205. I'm joined by a number of our members who I'd like them to stand, they're city employees. Here in Chattanooga, we're the folks who pick up, brush, collect the garbage, clean the streets, work in our community centers, maintain and operate our city services. We're librarians, mechanics, electricians, crew workers, truck drivers, and secretaries. In short, we're the heartbeat of the city. We're here to thank the mayor and his administration and you as council for your decision to include the $1,250 minimum increase for employee salaries. This is really important, doing this again to help raise our lowest-paid employees, to help them improve their living standards and provide for their families. Want to thank you also for, again, for three years in a row, providing a $1,250 bonus to Head Start workers. Those men and women are some of the lowest-paid workers in our city, but they're entrusted with, literally, with giving our kids a head start in life. So that's much appreciated, and I know they like it. The last thing I want to talk about is to applaud you for including in the budget a long overdue compensation study. It's something that we have been pushing for years to get in the budget. But also, I want to thank you for including in the budget, the mayor including in the budget, money to make changes that come out of that pay study. These are all good first steps, but they're not the last steps we need to take to make our city the best place to work. It's one thing to recruit jobs to our city that pay well. It's another thing to lead by example by making jobs in our city that our city has the best they can be. We and all the members of SEIU Local 205 look forward to working with the mayor and with you to keep on track and make that a reality. Thank you.
Thanks, Brett. Thank you very much. To the SEIU women and men out there in the audience, thank you so much for being here. We always welcome your input. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Stephen Russell. I'm an accounting technician for the City of Chattanooga and a SEIU member, Local 205. And we're asking that you support the mayor's budget because we believe it increases upward mobility and gives the members on the lower income scale health up. And we're asking that you say yes to the budget. Thank you for your time, and we support you in that effort.
Thank you, sir. Next? Is that it? Nobody else wants to speak? All right, you're going to have to really come up because otherwise we're going to call an end to the hearing. And while people are coming up, let me tell you that my keeper over here, Councilman Henderson, I believe I said 1:30, I meant 10 o'clock, beginning at 10 o'clock next Tuesday, we're going to start our discussing and debating, and it is an open, public meeting. Thank you. Hi.
Hi, my name is Juanita Lounwin Clay, sometimes known as Dr. J. I just want to say I am so grateful for having been appointed to the Board of Youth and Family Development, and especially with my responsibility as a Head Start Committee Chairperson. I am really grateful that this community, the mayor particularly, has given such encouragement and support to our early learning and Head Start programs. So I just want to encourage you that anything we ask for as far as youth and family development is concerned, just say yes.
Thanks, Dr. J. Hello, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Marie Mott of Oak Grove District 8. There are some things that I'm particularly concerned about with our budget. Of course, it is the fact that the overwhelming amount of it is going to our police department, which is corrupt. The fact that we have not cleaned up the police department and yet they eat up the majority of our budget is a disgrace. The fact that we have 5.24 million going to special operations is the military. The fact that May the 6th, the Kobe Jordan was murdered on the South Side, and according to the Chattanooga Police Department, the cameras that the taxpayer paid for happened to not work, and we have yet to have an understanding of clarity for his murder, and yet we're going to spend $2.7 million for real-time intelligence that doesn't seem to operate for the African-American community. I think it's even more disgraceful that public safety seems to be at the top and our children are down near the bottom. Even though we may say yes to YFD, YFD should really be at the top. How do we have a future in this city? Are we going to police our way out of problems? Are we going to invest in our children? And that is the way that we solve problems, through education, through Head Start, and through services. And then when you break down these things even further into sub compartments, what you finally discover, especially like when you talk about housing and the homeless, the majority of these sub parts go to salaries. How is it that a lot of money is going to the Chattanooga Police Department and yet our police officers are some of the lowest paid in the state? How is it that all of these funds continue to go to people who are solving homelessness and yet the homeless are bustled up down on 12th Street, 10th Street, 11th Street? I don't know, they're still not unhomeless. We keep putting money into things, into things that just don't work. My daddy told me a simple thing as a child that says stupidity or insanity is doing the exact same things over and over and expecting the results to be different. I am not scrutinizing the investment in our children. I am not scrutinizing the fact that we need an updated transportation system. I am not scrutinizing the fact that we do have employees that need investment and real-time benefits. What I am scrutinizing is the fact that we continue to put the police above the fire department, the police above our children, the police above our public workers, the police above our homeless, and that is a problem when they are corrupt. And all I'm saying is say yes to what really matters and scrutinize heavily the fact that we have yet to police ourselves out of a problem. People are still homeless, police officers are still not making enough money, our public workers are still underpaid, and yet we have not solved Chattanooga's problems.
Thanks, Ms. Mott. Thoughtful comments, thank you very much. Hello?
Hello. Time to change the channel to C-SPAN and take a little nap up here with this heavy stuff here, but hopefully it'll be of some interest to you. My name is Helen Byrne Sharp, 129 Walnut Street, representing accountability for taxpayer money. As you know, a budget consists of two parts, projected revenues and projected expenditures. Almost all of the attention in budget discussions is focused on how money will be spent. I would like to mention potential revenues that the city does not collect. I hope that council will begin to pay more attention to the revenue side of the equation as it relates to property tax incentives. Last year alone, the city did not collect $15.3 million due to pilots and TIFs. The agreements already in place, some last up to 30 years. This is money that if collected could go towards fire, police, streets, workforce development, recreation centers, et cetera. Maybe that does not seem like a lot of money to you, given the enormity of the entire city budget, but it can make a big difference in projects and programs important to city residents. Please make 2019, 20 the year you come up with council policies for pilots that will guide decision-making when businesses want to locate or expand. ATM is not against all tax breaks, but we believe that some agreements in the past may have been unnecessary or overly generous or have weak clawback language. In other words, not all pilots should be cleared for takeoff. As far as the specifics of this budget, on the Volkswagen item, I noticed there is 2.5 million in the cash incentive relative to their decision to build an electric vehicle. When they expanded several years ago to build the Atlas SUV, the city also provided a cash grant. But in 2014, the incentive was authorized in a council resolution to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the city, county, the IDB, and Volkswagen. The MOU also addressed pilot benefits for that expansion. I do not recall seeing a new MOU on your agenda recently. Please ask the city attorney about this. The Tubman Site, preparing for potential expansion of new jobs at the former Tubman Site is mentioned as a capital budget highlight. I did not see any detail or dollar amount. There are rumors in East Chattanooga Avondale that a tax increment finance district may be in the works for the Tubman neighborhood. If this is the case, please share with the entire Area 3 community so there is not the perception that only a select few in the neighborhood are in the know. And by the way, I at times support TIFs, particularly in areas like Avondale. Business Improvement District, ATM supports the creation of the Business Improvement District, provided amendments are added to a revised ordinance to make clear that all government-owned properties are excluded from the assessment, that pilot and TIF properties do not get special treatment, and that Sunshine Law provisions are added. Is there any money in your proposed budget that is earmarked as a city?
That's it. Thanks very much for your comments. Hi, Robert.
Hi. My name's Robert Lefford. I live at 3761 Cusco Well Trail in Jerry Mitchell's area. I'm the chief steward of the local here in Chattanooga, and we have some good workers here in the city, and I just want to thank you for all your hard work that you're doing on the budget, and we endorse the mayor's budget amendment that he's putting in, and we hope that you will too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Sure, go ahead.
Hi, I'm not with any particular organization today, but I just kind of wanted to say solidarity with the workers, the people fighting against the problems with the police department, the people changing things. I've got to be really honest, some of these things are frustrating because these are issues, you look back, these are decades ago that we've had these same issues, and no one's done anything? So like, maybe do something? That's all I have to say, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Would you give us your address and...
Yes, I'm actually technically assisted in Ridge Side, so...
Okay.
But I wanted to seek solidarity with all the people.
Thanks for saying what you think. Is there anyone else to talk about budget matters? Okay, so we fulfilled our goal for a public hearing, so hopefully we won't hear later on that the public didn't have input. The public had input from the very beginning. We had meetings all over town, hearing what the public wanted. Then we did our BFO project, which again included the public, and now we've done a public hearing. So we've made good our promise to include the public in every area of input that we could get, and to top it all off, we've put our budget online so that there's been nothing behind the scenes. Thank you very much for participating, and I'm now going to turn the meeting back over to the chair for the general business.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burris. All your efforts with putting all this together is appreciated by your colleagues, as well as I'm sure those who are here tonight and on the screen. Okay, Madam Clerk, we have no ordinances on final reading tonight, so then we will move on to ordinances on first reading. Please start with 6A. Well, hold on, you need... Okay, please. Please start out with 6A, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part 2, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property addressed to French Road, more particularly described herein from A1 Urban Agricultural Zone and R1 Residential Zone to RTZ Residential Townhouse Zero Lot Line Zone, C2 Convenience Commercial Zone, and UGC Urban General Commercial Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Would you like to say something now? Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Earlier, I did speak with the applicant, and John, we've both agreed that we would defer this for one week until the 18th to come up with some language about how to delineate about what would be cleared and what would not be cleared. So, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we defer until the 18th.
Okay, we have a motion to defer. We have a second. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Motion carries. Let's move on to B, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part 2, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 6246 Dayton Boulevard, more particularly described herein from C2 Convenience Commercial Zone and R4 Special Zone to C2 Convenience Commercial Zone and R4 Special Zone.
Is the applicant present? Is there any opposition? What's your pleasure? Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Motion carries. C, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part 2, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 1514 Shelby Circle, more particularly described herein from R1 Residential Zone to R4 Special Zone to R3 Residential Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Councilman Smith, followed by Councilman Lefford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item was previously deferred, and in that amount of time, the developer had gotten with the community, had a big meeting, took in a lot of input, and after which requested a 60-day deferral to kind of go back to the drawing board and see what could possibly be done to work closer with the community on this project. So with that, sir, I am going to move deferral till August 6th, please.
Okay, move to defer to August 6th. It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Lefford. Questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Motion carries. D, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part 2, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 1106 Greens Road, more particularly described herein from O1 Office Zone to C5 Neighborhood Commercial Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Councilman Lefford.
Thank you, Chairman. John, can you give me the conditions one more time, please?
Uh, there's five conditions. One, no dumpster for trash service permitted. Two, retain the use of existing structure and limited to one story. Three, one monument sign which shall be set back 10 feet from any property line. The sign shall not exceed 48 square feet in area and shall not be more than four feet in height. If illuminated, the sign shall be indirectly lit in such a way that the light source cannot be seen from adjoining residential property. The lighting intensity shall not exceed 25-foot candles at the face of the sign. No flashing or intermittent lights will be permitted, and no internally illuminated signs shall be permitted. That was three. Let me go to four and five. Four, except for existing driveway and parking, no additional surface parking or paving shall be permitted between the structure and East Sprenner Road. And finally, number five, no curb cuts permitted on East Sprenner Road.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for. Move to approve?
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Smith. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Motion carries. E, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part 2, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 6421 Bonnyoke Drive, more particularly described herein from M3 Warehouse and Wholesale Zone and R3 Residential Zone to M2 Light Industrial Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Councilman Gilbert.
John?
Yes, sir.
Can you read the conditions?
Sure, there are two conditions. One, demolition of two existing warehouse buildings, and two, the use limited to gas metering and control station only.
Okay. Do you want to say who's against and who's for, so before we go in further? Who's against and who's for? Do you want to say who's against and who's for?
Any opposition?
Is the applicant present? Is there any opposition? Move to approve? It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Lefford. Questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Motion carries. F, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part 2, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to lift conditions from ordinance number 1 to 887, previous case number 2014-123, on properties located at 6803, 6807, and 6811 McCutcheon Road, more particularly described herein.
Councilwoman Burris.
Is the applicant here? I'd like for the applicant to present. This is a rather interesting situation.
Applicant, please.
I just want to point out that nobody else had to present yet tonight, but Chris Anderson for the property owner. Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman, thank you for having me tonight. This is a rather unusual case that occurred in the previous city council, who attached some conditions to a piece of property on McCutcheon Road tied to the development of that property. At the time, the property owner sought to put five four-unit apartment buildings. He is now seeking to put two four-unit buildings. As a result of that density at the time, CDOT wanted not just the property in front of ours improved, but also the 200 feet not in front of our property, in front of the neighbor's property. That's caused a problem because that neighbor has a fence and a ditch or a swale on the property that we really can't move. So the point, the purpose tonight is to, since we're reducing the density from 20 units down to eight, request lifting of those conditions, and as I understand it, no opposition has come forward from city government or local residents.
That's really correct, and as I understand from the planning commission, the reason for the denial was they didn't want to lift a condition that we had put on originally. They left it to us to lift the condition. So, that being said, I move that we lift the condition.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Madam Clerk, G.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part 2, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone properties located at 2005, 2007, and 2009 Milne Street, more particularly described herein from R1 Residential Zone to R2 Residential Zone.
Councilman Bird, hit your button, sir.
Thank you, Chair. This is a program that ECD, a pilot, that they're trying to launch, and I think this is something good to create housing for the community, especially affordable housing, and with that, I move to approve.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Smith.
Just to make sure, any opposition?
Okay, applicant, opposition? Is there any opposition here? Okay, well, we got one.
I'd just like to ask a question. I'm in support of this program and what the administration's trying to do here. I wonder is, are these several duplexes in a block where the rest of the zoning is going to remain single-family? In other words, is this, could this be construed as spot zoning? Should maybe the entire block be looked at? I don't know, maybe it's right on the end and maybe it's an issue, but that's just a question I would raise.
It's right on the end of a block, and it's mixed use around this entire area where we do have single and multifamily use in the community.
Okay, thank you, sounds good.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. You've got anything else you want to say, Councilman?
No, sir.
Any questions further? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Okay, got one nay. Motion carries. A, please. No, I'm sorry, let's back up to H. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part 2, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 800 Moss Street, more particularly described herein from R1 Residential Zone to R2 Residential Zone, subject to certain conditions.
With Councilwoman Comrade? Is the applicant present? Is there any opposition? Councilwoman Comrade?
John, if you will provide a presentation.
Okay, sure. I got the PDF put up, please. There's reason not. Here we go, now it's advancing. Let's see. This is it, right here. Nope. Let's see Springer. Just did that one. There we go. This is a request rezoning of properties in R one to R two to reoccupy an existing house that's developed as a duplex at corner of Shalford Road and Moss Street. If you look at the use of the area, the area is, does have a couple duplexes already on the block and some single-family, very similar to the last case we just looked at. This is on a corner property on Shalford Road. If you look at the zoning, it's predominantly R one, although you do have R three on the adjacent corner for another apartment. There is no zoning history for this site. The closest R two zone is about two-point-two miles away on southeast on Tonneboulevard. Again, this case, you have an existing structure built as a duplex. The site plan indicates you're just trying to reoccupy that duplex using the same curb cut to service that site. The East Dale Plan adopted nineteen ninety-eight, recommended low-density residential. So looking, as you know, staff looks at these cases, we're taking a look at several factors. Of course, the plan recommendations, but also how old that plan is. We also look at zoning patterns in the area, the existing uses on the block. In this case, you had an existing structure that was built to be used as a duplex, fact that was located on a corner of that block, and you had the adjacent R three zoning. Staff did recommend to approve with some conditions to ensure compatibility with the adjacent single-family residences. One is that no vehicle access would be permitted on Shalford Road, and the use of existing driveways only. So that's just kind of going to regulate how the property is accessed. So it came with a recommendation to approve with those two conditions from staff. At Planning Commission, there was no opposition, and Planning Commission concurred with staff's recommendation to approve with those two conditions.
Thank you, John. And so the Neighborhood Association met with the property owner, and we're really excited what he's going to do with the duplex. It's been vacant for quite some time. It's actually been an eyesore in our community. So we're thankful to have somebody to come and try to improve that area, that block. And we've, I've heard the cries continuously from constituents and people that don't even live in our district that we need to have more affordable housing, or low-income housing, or various types of housing. And so today, we're going to make that motion to approve.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Bird. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay. Motion carries. Aye, please, Madam Clerk.
In order to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Zoning Ordinance, so as to rezone property located at sixteen oh four Arlington Avenue, more particularly described herein from R one residential zone to R two residential zone.
Councilwoman Coonroy?
Thank you, Chair. John, if you would give us a presentation.
Sure. This is a request to rezonate a piece of property as indicated in the presentation, at sixteen hundred block of Arlington Avenue. Again, it's existing structure built as a duplex from R one to R two zone. If you look at the mix, it is, I would say this block has, at least on this particular side, the east side of Arlington is mostly single-family. This is a duplex on that side of the street. The rest of the structures are single-family. There is a institutional use across the street to the west. Again, you can see the site in the upper-left-hand corner. You see Arlington Avenue, the institutional across the street in the lower right, and some of the adjacent homes. This shows the zoning for the area. You do have C two on the corner, but the rest of this was, again, downzoned to R one as part of the rezoning study. And this is probably a good point to mention as part of the rezoning, so I think it may say it. Let's see. No, it doesn't. That, just want to reiterate, anytime we do a blanket downzoning, one of the things we note is, is that part of that was, at the time, the entire area was zoned R two or R three. And this is trying to rebalance the predominant zone in the area of R one. But the study did note, on a case-by-case basis, we would consider existing duplexes that could potentially come back as R two, subject to certain, you know, situations on a case-by-case basis. So in this case, you had an existing structure that was developed as a duplex, been vacant for quite some time. That's one of the things, and you do have an institutional use across the street. So looking at all those factors, staff recommended to approve the rezoning of this particular use because it was already developed as a duplex. This is the site plan showing the existing structure and the parking for that. I do have a, I think I was, some images were provided by the applicant about, again, this is the current condition of the duplex, and this is kind of what they're proposing to do to improve the property. At Planning Commission, there was opposition present. Some of the concerns presented by opposition was, again, trying to maintain conformity with the plan and ensuring that, I guess, the property is properly maintained. But after hearing from the public, the applicant, and staff's recommendation, Planning Commission concurred with staff's recommendation to approve.
Is the applicant here? Any opposition? We can hear from the applicant, please.
Let me, did I see any opposition?
Yeah.
Okay, got you, okay, thank you.
My name is Oscar Reyes at twenty-six oh four Valley View Drive in Rocky, Rocky Face, Georgia. Basically purchased this property about three months ago, and it's been vacant for a while. And what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to bring up, bring this property back to better than how it was built originally because it didn't have many of the amenities that we have now. For instance, a central heating and air, also like a driveway as well, and things like that. I met with the president of the community, and we have come up with a, we basically sat down and talked about the developments and the, what they want to do to the area. And we went to look at some property around that, this area on Okoye, and just gave us some ideas, and that's why I came up with the picture that I sent Councilwoman for the future, what I intend to do with the property. I understand that the community has some issues with tenant or landlords that didn't take much care of this property, just buying it for cash flow and then just leave. Those are not my intentions. I also understand that it's a potential program that it's a duplex to owner occupancy that I'm interested to, to be willing to sell it as, to sell it to somebody that's going to actually live in there and then rent the other, the other side. Another thing that I'm aware of is the, there's not many comps as far as, you know, remodeled properties, and that's one of the things also that I want to improve because I'm a realtor in Dalton, Georgia, and a motor license here in Tennessee. And that's something that, you know, it helps the economy, it helps the people too, to move into good living conditions and so forth. So that's, that's basically what I'm trying to do here.
Thank you, Mr. Oscar. We can hear from the opposition.
Hello, my name is Ken Smith. I am the president of the Avondale Neighborhood Association. As Mr. Reyes just mentioned, we did have an opportunity to sit down and talk and discuss about this project, and we really are excited about what he wants to do. The opposition, it may or may not fall in that category, but as he just mentioned, we are interested in getting this project involved in the duplex to homeownership program that we just had a hearing on or just voted on. And we're not sure of the timetable for how Mr. Reyes' project can coincide with this homeowner, duplex to homeownership program. So it is not so much as an opposition as if we could figure out a way for this project to be matched with the duplex to homeownership program and the timetable for when that project can get started. So if, if we could, we'd like for Mr. Reyes to participate in that program if it's at all possible.
Thank you, Mr. Ken. So what I heard him say is that he would sell it to somebody who would want to live in on one side and then rent the other side. If Ms. Dunn, if you could come, because to my understanding, it's a pilot program that hadn't even got started yet. Can you provide us with a timeline of what that looks like to get started, or what's the potential of Mr. Oscar entering into this program?
Thank you, counsel. I've presented this to counsel a few times and to the county commission, so I welcome this opportunity to do it again. The owner-occupied duplex program is for owner-occupied duplexes. So if a owner does not intend to sell the property, which would allow it to be sold to someone who is going to occupy one half and rent the other half, this is not the program for them. If their interest is to buy and hold like a traditional landlord would do, the city has programs for that that will help them with the renovation of the property so that it can be reserved for low-to-moderate income tenants. It is a pilot program, meaning we will test it with the three properties that you all just voted to upzone, that's two thousand five, seven, and nine Milne. We have a number of legal processes that have to be completed because it's a back-tax, those are back-tax properties. The titles of back-tax properties are notoriously clouded, and so we need to make sure that if we, when we sell the property to someone who is going to renovate it and eventually sell it to someone who are owner-occupied, that that purchaser can receive a clear title from the city, which is required by every lender in the United States of America. So we can't transfer, in good faith, transfer a piece of property to an owner who would be unable to obtain a warranty deed for, which would be required for most lenders. So we don't have a timeframe, our timeframe, we've been working on this legal issue since before we announced the program. So once that is completed, and we can, in good faith, issue warranty deeds to the subsequent purchaser, we will get the program started. As I said to you the last time, I was before you, related to the program, we have lots of interest from folks who would like to purchase it, renovate it. We have lots of interest from folks who would like to then purchase the renovated unit, live on one side, rent the other side, and we have lots of interest from folks who would like to rent the other side of a renovated duplex at that location.
Thank you for explaining that again.
Yeah, thank you. And again, this program is not for someone whose intent is to buy and hold their duplex, which is the traditional investment strategy for a landlord, but we do have some really good programs for landlords who would like to do that. And if they're interested, they can certainly call my office or grab me after this. Thank you.
Councilman Bird.
Yes, Chair. Thank you. Phil, with that being said, is it possible to get the acceptance of this situation? I know it's one duplex from Ken Smith, the neighbor, the president for out there. Is it possible to, the zoning, the upzone to R two, to put an amendment that it would have to be sold, or it would be R two for homeownership?
We, if you don't have the program established right now, I think that would be difficult to do.
You can't do that.
As a condition on, on the zoning.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Coonroy?
Thank you, Chair. John, if you please, would go back to the street view?
Yes.
Of where that duplex is.
Am I on? There we go. The existing condition?
Yeah, the keep going. Next, the...
Are you trying, just going, going up the block itself?
Mm-hmm.
The aerial, or that?
Yes, the next one, the block that, the picture where you showing the, yeah, Arlington Avenue. Thank you.
Yes.
When I look at this area, it really saddens me. It's been severely declined. The property on Arlington, the duplex that Mr. Oscar purchased, has been dilapidated, abandoned for quite some time. It's, it's an eyesore. In fact, that whole side is, I wish somebody would invest in the additional properties that can use a little housekeeping and keep up. The next-door property is a duplex, and the owner of that duplex has fixed it up quite nice. Our Area Three Plan has revealed that we need to have a variety of housing in our communities, and that consists of mixed-use duplexes, home ownership, a variety of things. And if the duplex program was already established, it would make sense that Mr. Oscar could have the opportunity to get into this program. However, we don't have a timeline, we don't have a date as to when it's going to be, could get up, get off the ground, up and running for even more people to get involved in it, although it's great that many property owners have been inquiring about it, but there is no traction to move it forward. So I think that this is a great investment that Mr. Oscar is going to do in this community. I think it's going to help spruce up this street of Arlington Street. And based on the findings of their R three, our Area Three survey today, I'm moving forward to approve.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Bird. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay. Motion carries. Now we'll move on to resolutions. Seven, A, please.
A resolution authorizing the Chief Information Officer, CIO, to exercise and renew the existing blanket contract with KCI Technologies to be provided of software licensing, technology support, and professional services associated with City Works Managed Hosted Solutions Citywide from July eighteen, two thousand nineteen through July seventeen, twenty twenty, for the amount of thirty-six thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-six cent.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? Been moved and properly seconded. Questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay. Motion carries. B, please.
A resolution approving a special exceptions permit for a contractor's office and a C two convenience commercial zone for property located at sixty-two forty-six Dayton Boulevard, subject to certain conditions.
Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an ongoing project that we started quite a while back and got to this point finally today, thanks to Councilman Henderson's brilliant idea of the special exceptions. So with that, sir, I'd like to move approval.
It's been moved and enthusiastically seconded by Councilman Mitchell. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Poses nay. Motion carries. C, please.
A resolution approving a special exceptions permit for an existing liquor store changing ownership located at thirty-two oh nine Broad Street.
Councilman Ledford.
Chairman, this is in your district, and if you are okay with this, I will move to approve.
I am definitely okay with it. It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Gilbert. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay. One abstention. Motion carries. Now we're on to purchasing. Good evening, Barney.
Our first four purchases for your consideration tonight are on behalf of Public Works. First, we have the purchase of golf carts to be awarded to Chattanooga Golf Carts in a total amount of seventy-one thousand, four hundred dollars. Next, a new blanket contract for generator hauling services to be awarded to Doug Yates Towing and Recovery in an estimated annual amount of seventy thousand dollars. Next, the renewal of two blanket contracts for river sand for pickup or delivery to be awarded to First McKinley Excavating and Second Ramsey Trucking, Inc., in a total estimated annual amount of sixty thousand dollars. Next, the renewal of two blanket contracts for fencing materials, repair, and installation to be awarded to First River City Fence, Inc., and Second Heritage Fence and Repair, Inc., in a total estimated annual amount of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And finally, on behalf of the Economic and Community Development Department, we have two new... two new blanket contracts for lead-based paint risk assessment to be awarded to First Alternative Actions, Inc., and Second Frost Environmental Services LLC in a total estimated annual amount of $70,000.
Thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Bird. All in favor by the sign of I? Poses nay? Motion carries.
Now we'll move on to other business. Is there any other business, counsel, you would like to share tonight? Yeah. Oh, well, I was going to do the appointments and then we'll do the liquor. Okay, we have Councilman Gilbert.
Chair, I'd like to appoint Kristi Rasheed to the representatives of five on the Police Advisory Review Committee. That's a form.
Form of motion.
Form of motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor by the sign of I?
Aye.
Poses nay? Motion carries. Councilwoman Coomrod.
Thank you, Chair. But first, I just wanted to announce, and I've been really joyous about this, is that this morning, our Governor Bill Lee signed the bill HB 0941, which removes the fees for any petition of expungement and a $350 fee that's applied to get your, to get a diversion removed off your record. So. Yeah, it's, it's no secret that, you know, I'm very passionate about criminal justice reform. Governor Lee has, when I tell you he has my full 100 support on anything that he does when it comes to criminal justice reform, it's very important. It's important that we let the communities know so people can be aware, this information so they can get their criminal records cleaned up, so they can get jobs, so they can get housing, educational opportunities. So it's no excuses, people. The fee, the complaint has been that we can't afford this fee. Now that it's gonna be removed, please get your family, friends and your neighbors down to the courthouse as soon as they let Dean, Vince Dean, know about it so you can get, we can start that process to get your records cleaned up. It's no excuses. There is no reason for not to make this happen. And then, secondly, I'd like to appoint Jacqueline A. Thomas as the representative for the Police Advisory Board Committee.
That is a form of motion.
Yes.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Gilbert. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of I?
Aye.
Poses nay? Motion carries. Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Chairman. I would also like to make an appointment to the Police Advisory Committee, Mr. Michael C. Watkins. I believe he's in the audience tonight. There you are. Mr. Watkins is a Navy veteran, a retired executive from GE. He has been trained as a counselor, conflict resolution, financial and organizational management and planning. I think he will make a great value and bring great talent to the committee, and I would like to make that appointment now. If I can ask for a second? Thank you.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of I?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say that we, I think we're supposed to call out our terms, and that is an appointment for a three-year term.
Motion carries. Councilman Bird.
Thank you, Chair. There we go. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to make my appointment also today to the Police Advisory Committee, and I appoint, in the form of a motion, Sylvester Harris, and he's in the audience today. Mr. Sylvester, could you please stand up? Sylvester Harris is a great citizen when it comes to District 8. He keeps us on our toes. He definitely keeps me on my toes, and I just think he would be a great, great asset to this advisory committee, and I do ask for a second. Thank you.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of I? Poses nay? Motion carries. Councilwoman Burris.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. It's my privilege to appoint Richard W. Gordon, who is a retired senior administrative law judge, to the Police Advisory Committee. He'll be appointed for a one-year term with a, an available follow-up of a three-year term. Thank you very much. I make that in the form of a motion.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of I?
Aye.
Poses nay? Motion carries. There's no other business before this council? We have a certificate of compliance, MJ Liquor?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And this is just an existing business and a change of ownership here, and just need to have five signatures signed off of the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now we'll move on to committee reports. Councilwoman Burris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've already pretty much given my report, and let me reiterate, the beginning next week at 10 o'clock, we will begin discussing our feelings about everything that's been presented to us. It is an open meeting. It is open to the press, and we welcome everyone who wants to be part of it. It will be in the council conference room. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Bird.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Next Tuesday during committee, we will have a committee session discussing the bid process and also short-term vacation rentals, and this will happen Tuesday at 3 o'clock during committee for ECD.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Gilbert.
Norport.
Councilman Henderson.
Norport.
Councilman Ledford.
Norport, Chairman.
Councilman Mitchell.
Norport.
Councilman Smith.
Norport, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Coomrod. Committee report.
Thank you, Chair. So today, Coach. Jennings and Dr. David Banks, they presented today on career development, doing great things with the YFD Center with career development with our adults and with our youth over at Howard.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Now we have reached a point in this meeting where we have recognition of persons wishing to address the council on non-agenda items. Mr. City Attorney, would you please read the rules?
Yes, sir. The city council's adopted these rules. At the end of each council business meeting, the chair can recognize members of the public who wish to address the council, and there's, these are your rules. Each person wanting to speak to the council can be recognized only at the microphone up front. Can't have more than three minutes to speak. You can only address the council upon matters within their legislative and quasi-judicial authority. Can't be permitted to use any vulgar obscene language nor use the floor to personally attack or personally denigrate others. Address your comments to the council as a whole, not to individual council members, and the chair cannot recognize any person, neighborhood, association or organization to speak on non-agenda matters more than twice in a 30-day time period.
And, Mr. City Attorney, you may also add about the.
There's other, your other rule, and I guess we don't usually get to this on here, that somebody wishing to address the council can only do so once during a council day, either at the agenda session, committee meeting, or the council business meeting.
Thank you, sir. Was there anybody that wished to speak?
Hi, my name's Greg Dixon. I'm a resident of District 7, longtime resident of Chattanooga as well. I came here last Tuesday. It was my very first city council meeting, and I was here to speak on a soft issue of youth community development, but the things that I heard during the public hearing for the bid matter concerned me greatly. I'm not a property owner in the downtown area. I would like to be a business owner in the downtown area. I think that any small business owner who lives in any municipality in Chattanooga dreams of having a location in downtown, which is the most heavily foot-traffic economic area in the city. So the things that really concern me about this is, you know, the, the pros for this is it's a way for private industry to pick up the slack that they feel like the city has not been doing, another way to revitalize the downtown area. It all sounds well and good at first take. Bids actually have their history in New York City at a time when literally the Bronx was burning and normal services like trash couldn't be taken care of, so the community came together to organize, to take care of these things. I think that our city council does a pretty good job with base things, especially in the downtown area, and I don't see the need to privatize any more municipal services. You have people who don't pay any property taxes at all, who are the loudest voices for this thing, who want to levy taxes on all the rest of the property owners, and this won't just be a tax on property owners. This affects everybody in Chattanooga, even if you're not in this district, because any basic econ class can show you that the people who own these properties are not gonna absorb the cost of that tax. They're gonna mitigate it down to the tenants, and then these tenants will mitigate it down to the consumer through the price of goods and services increasing. So I, I, the continuation of the bid in the media and the concern that I have with some of the city council members who just continue to push for this, I, I, I feel like there was no voice or say for anybody other than property owners in that public hearing, so I'm excited to hear that coming this Tuesday at 3 o'clock, we're going to have an actual public hearing where everybody from Chattanooga can speak on their behalf. Am I clear, or is this only for property owners?
What, what you have this coming, next Tuesday, is a committee meeting.
Is a committee meeting.
So it's not a public hearing.
It's open to the public, but.
You, you're welcome to come and, and listen to what we discuss in, in that particular committee. You surely are.
Okay.
But it's not a public hearing.
Thank you for the clarification on that, for sure.
No problem, sir.
But I just want to express my concern to everyone here who sits on the council and to all Chattanooga citizens to please read into this and see what's happening, because the transparency on this issue is very minimal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
I'm Charles Paddy. I live, I live in the Belvoir area of Brainerd, but I own property in the downtown area on Patton Parkway. First, I want to say that I think, to echo what he said, I think the city does a wonderful job in how they take care of the city as far as first responders, whether it's fire, police protection, whether it's sanitation. I, I think the level of services that we get, you pick up the phone, I see people come out and take care of that immediately. What I do want to address is the, bringing this matter back up after last week's failure to actually have a second to the motion. And the reason I brought it up is because the statute on, under Tennessee law about it not coming up within a 12-month period. Now, the way that can happen, though, is that if the city or the municipality under state law changes the boundaries, you can bring it back up within a year if you simply change the boundaries. And what I'm here asking you today is to change the boundaries, to take our property, as you know, we do not want to be in this bid. Take our property out. The pro, the boundary can simply go down. Georgia Avenue, it still will take in the property owned by the Tomorrow Building. It will take in the Volunteer Building. Just don't come down Patton Parkway, and you can change that boundary, and you can have a hearing with no problem in violation of what I think is the state statute. Number two is, the board. Heard a lot of conversation about how this board was gonna be comprised, how it was gonna be elected, who was gonna oversee this board. I think that any board, and listening to this meeting today on the budget and the openness of where things are discussed, and the fact that you people are elected officials, you are beholden to the people who elect you. If you don't do what they want you to, they can vote you out of office.
That's right.
So what I'm suggesting is that the city council, if you're going to do this, you appoint a board that you have control over as far as who you appoint, how their term, how long their terms are, and if there is a vacancy, whether their term is expired or for some other reason, that you, council, reappoint them, not a self-perpetuating board that they continue to just appoint themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Money Bell, the homeless journalist, the gray-haired fox. I'm like Clark Kent until I go into that little booth and turn into what you're getting ready to face. Councilwoman Coomrod, Councilman Bird, is what I refer to you. I don't know when you two came into my neighborhood and my community, but I know very well neither one of you grew up on Oakway Street, the same street that Sam Jackson and I grew up. And if you go right through that tunnel, that's that area where Usher grew up, I know neither one of you grew up there, and I want you both out of my neighborhood and community with your projects, both of you. You didn't grow up there, and I want you in the city business away from my neighborhood. You on my street now ain't a good place to be when you're crooked, and I mean that wholeheartedly. This is a parade article that came out probably before both of you were born with Mayor John Kenzie, talking about the improvement and the involvement of the citizens of the state and county of this, oh, wonderful place. You know what I had a problem with? The little black boy in the picture didn't have anybody with his arm around them. All of this improvement, all of this inclusion, but you didn't include me, just like Eleanor Woods didn't include me up at UTC the other day with her program. I gave WN00 and the NAACP the letter grade of F. I am the news talk pioneer. I called them on Mother's Day and told them, if you don't get Commissioner Greg Beck and Eleanor Woods off of the airwaves, the rest of you are next with this Jerome Jennings School of Broadcasting. Oh, we gonna get you off the air. Three days later, kaboom. The tower went down. Have they given Money Bell any credit for that? No, it's an act of nature. Okay? Just came back from Atlanta looking for Mr. Robert F. Smith. Wonder where you came up with the idea of awarding $40 million to Morehouse? I pledged on David Tullis Show before this council and the county commission $19 million for Brainerd High School, the Panthers. The kids that I couldn't get back to because of your politics, they've already graduated. Have I stood there with that money for them? No. Are you gonna do anything in my neighborhood? Hell, no! Get out of my neighborhood. Get me my $40 billion. And I mean now. I don't care who you got trying to arrest Money Bell. Y'all came to me with some firearms in June. Ku Klux Klan members hired to kill me because I want to improve my neighborhood and community. I'm the best broadcast journalist ever, and I'm here to prove it to you. I want you off the airwaves. I want you off now. I want my money now. David Tullis? When did Coomrod come into my neighborhood? You ain't been there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bell. We appreciate your comments.
And I want my money, and I want it right now.
Is there anybody else who would love to, like to speak this evening? Counsel?
We are adjourned.